Next on the agenda, we have 6.5 enters our 9:15. Consideration of Appeal AB 24-02. Of Planning Commission's Approval of Major Use Permit UP 20-96 Highland Farms LP Autumn Carcy as applicant and Tom Laicic, Margot Cambera and Associates as appellant. Location 7408 7522 7527 7634 and 7746 Highland Springs Road and 7257 and 7357 Amber Ridge Road in Lakeport, California APNs 007-006-2734 3540 41 and 007-057-0102. Looks like we have Community Development here. I'll give it to Director Turner to start things off.
Thank you. Mariaa Turner, Director of Community Development. You have before you today an appeal, but I wanted to bring to the Board's attention a receipt yesterday of a letter of request for withdrawal from the applicant of the major use permit that is part of this appeal. It is, so the applicant is requesting to withdraw the entire project, the use permit.
If I may.
She requests, and I defer to Lloyd.
Just as a procedural matter, your board may want to swear in witnesses before the hearing.
Thank you. I should know that. Johanna?
If you're on Zoom, will you raise your hand if you're going to speak to this? That I saw one person. All right, if not, everybody else with your right hand raised. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and I have two people in Zoom, Sarah Ryan and Monica, so, oh, and James Anderson. So, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Lloyd, thank you for catching that.
Still Mariaa Turner, Director of Community Development. We did receive a letter from the applicant or the owner of the use permit, major use permit UP 20-96 requesting withdrawal of this use permit. She's also requested the opportunity to present to the Board that request.
Anything else?
We are prepared to present on this appeal should the Board decide it wants to move forward.
So with that, Lloyd, would, if we accept the withdrawal, we would have to discuss it here, or should we allow the applicant to come up and explain? Would that be ideal first?
Yes, so your board may want to take up the item of the withdrawal request first. Following those procedures, board may want to take into consideration what the applicant is proposing to present in relation to the withdrawal request along with any other testimony.[197.65]
You on at all at this point, but it feels like you're telling us that there's a choice that we can make.
Well, there's two, two types of withdrawal that's presented to your potential types of withdrawal presented to your board. The, and, and in part, it hinges on whether or not, again, the appellant is willing to withdraw their appeal. If it's, if the appellant is not willing to withdraw their, their appeal and wants to provide a presentation on the merits in spite of the request by the applicant to withdraw their application, then what's before your board, there is still, there would still be a pending appeal before your board, which needs, in which the appeal is on the planning commission's decision on this application that has been withdrawn. The, the appeal in a lot of ways, if it's not, if the appeal is not withdrawn, the, it would still be pending and however it is, it would be moot. It would, it would be moot in light of the withdrawal of the application. So one possible option for your board in that scenario would be to overturn the planning commission's decision because that's, there would still be in that scenario, a pending appeal before your board and a decision on the planning commission's determination would still need to be made by your board because there would still be a pending active appeal. It's all very procedural, however, if the appeal itself is withdrawn, then there is no appeal before your board and your board may just move to accept the withdrawal of that appeal and at the same time overturn the planning commission's decision on the application because the application's been withdrawn.
It's a little muddy, but yes.
So with that, it looks like you've stated that you would accept the withdrawal, but then now you've come back and stated that.
We accept the withdrawal, obviously, we can't not accept the withdrawal. What we would like is to have the appeal granted and the planning commission's decision overturned as a matter of procedure and for the record. My clients have worked incredibly hard and spent a lot of time on this appeal and we would like to have it formally overturned. We'd like to have that approval formally overturned if the board is willing to do so today.
And that's what you just said.
Given the changed nature of things.
All right, so I'll ask the board what, what direction we would like to go here. And I know that Supervisor Owen, you had stated you would like to hear.
Well, I just felt that, that they had spent the money and that they had taken the time to come here and since they were wanting to briefly kind of put out some, I didn't mind hearing it, but I, at the same time, I'm not sure what the proper route is. It's sounding to me by counsel that we should probably just accept it and it's done. Is that correct?
In terms of the withdrawal of the application.
Yes.
If the application is, is requested to be withdrawn, there would still be this pending appeal that has not been withdrawn. And so the, your board, as part of your board's possible decision, it would be to, with the, with this pending appeal, still decide on whether or not to overturn the planning commission's decision because there would still be a pending appeal. And the, in, in light of those circumstances, one option for your board would be to overturn the, on the merits, the planning commission's decision in light of the withdrawal of the application.
And so I guess the question is, is the appellant desiring to withdraw the appeal in light of the withdrawal of the project?
Uh, no, we would like the board to make a determination today. If the board decides that it wants to overturn the planning commission's approval in light of the withdrawal of the application, will accept that. We would just like some action to be taken on the appeal.
Okay, so you'll, you would accept the withdrawal, but at the same time, you would, you're not going to withdraw your appeal.
Not, none of this.
I just want to make sure I'm hearing it.
No, you are, you're getting it right. It is muddy.
All right, Ms. Carcy, I see that, or Supervisor Sabatier, then Ms. Carcy, I've seen you stood up, so.
I just think the clearest way is the latter option that was provided to us by county council, which is to overturn what the planning commission did due to the fact that there's no longer a project because it's been withdrawn. And I think that's the cleanest, easiest. That way, we don't get our voice involved in anything in the future until we have a full situation in front of us potentially, just like the planning commission gets to go through all the details. And at this moment, without details, I don't think we should get involved in a yay or a nay on the appeal. And I think that that is the cleanest option that's been provided to us, so.
That's actually good.
Supervisor or Vice Chair Rasmussen, and then Ms. Carcy, if you will.
Yeah, I agree, and I would really not like to have a presentation because we've been, we've been reading all these documents for many, many months. They've been submitted, we've, we've had a lot of time on this, and I'd like to release staff to get back to work.
Vice Chair.
I'm in favor of hearing it and considering the, a returning of the planning commission's decision.
I think James Anderson, James Anderson.
Yes. May I speak?
Yes.
Autumn Carcy, applicant. Our attorney, James Anderson, is on the line, so if the board should choose to move to the appeal and hear the item today, I would like James to speak as well, but you can make that decision.
And so, back to the board here. So Supervisor Sabatier, you've proposed to move forward with county council's statement and, and how does, and I know that, is that what you're saying as well, or are you saying?
Well, if I understand. Correctly, what I'm saying is the option of they've requested to withdraw the project, the applicant does not want to withdraw.
The appeal.
Their appeal, so considering that portion to consider, you know, overturning the, the project on the merits.
I see what you mean. All right, so Supervisor Owen, and then.
Actually, something that Bruno had said kind of clicked with me, and as you know, I'm a little green here, but I, I think it was more clearly stated just a moment ago with your definition that once it's gone and we would want to hear, what, what I agree with you about is, though I'd like to hear it, and unlike some of the supervisors up here, I'm new, so therefore, for me to, you know, get the information would be important before I made a decision. However, as Mr. Sabatier had mentioned, it would, we would really have to hear a lot of it for us to make that decision. So in light of that, since we don't have your side of the story, I think that probably just withdrawing it might be the better option.
Supervisor Sabatier.
And I'm ready to make a motion if county council can help me out with that motion.
Would I have to open it up for the public first and then go from there? All right, so with that, if there's not anything else from staff, and then I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment about the discussion at hand when it comes to the withdrawal, right?
Good morning, Sarah Bodnar, consultant working with the applicant, and I just want to say that we, we think this has taken up enough time for this board, and so we won't be engaging in any back and forth if you decide to entertain discussion today. We'd like to close this book and move on. So thank you for your time and your thoughtfulness in this, and we will be just sitting down. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good morning, I'm Peter Lucetti. I own a property at 21333 Grange Road in Middletown, California. My family has successfully farmed beef cattle there since 1970. We've been farming beef cattle in Lake County for 55 years, never missed a year of production. I've become recently very active in the cannabis dialogue in Lake County. I wrote a paper on cannabis reform in September 2024 that I hope at some future date to come and talk to you about in greater length. But as regards to this matter specifically, the Highland Farms storyline and what's going on in the room today, I want to make this comment. A hundred percent of the applications that approved of cannabis in Lake County to date have been approved using mitigated negative declarations. Hundred percent have been approved that way. This appeal is about the inadequacies of the concept of a mitigated negative declaration, the idea that some applications should go to a higher level of review. This is a very important idea because it seems to me that 150-plus applications should not, under this process, have gone to mitigated, mitigated negative declaration. So when I think of the applicant's desire to have the appeal heard, what I really hear in my mind is the idea that this principle is very important for this board. The board needs to do this, if you don't want to do it today, then let's do it on the day when you're ready and you have the time. This principle is a very important principle for the board to consider. We can't go on in Lake County cannabis policy thinking that we can rinse and repeat by withdrawing and then going back through the process without establishing some precedent for what the folks here came to talk about today. Fair is fair. Let's get all the facts on the table. Let's get the whole process out in the open and decide how the SOP, the standard operating procedure for cannabis applications are going to work in Lake County because a hundred percent negative declarations is a false process. It's an erroneous process, and I'll end with this. Consider this as you think about time, resources, the importance of quality of life, environment, and money and time and budget in Lake County. 575 acres have been approved with 150-plus negative declarations. Today, approximately, and we don't have perfect data because the annual audits aren't done correctly, 86.3% are not being utilized, 83.6% of the acreage is not being farmed. But we're paying for, through the mitigated negative declarations, the annual review process and the, and the code enforcement process of county staff to maintain all of that, instead of pushing it to a higher level of review through the SEQA process and having these applications more rigorously reviewed and more rigorously vetted from the beginning. That's what's at stake in this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else that would like to come up? Yes, and then.
Good morning, Board and staff and council and everyone else out there. My name is Maria Khan. I am a 25-year resident of Lake County. I'm also an East Region Town Hall Municipal Advisory Council member, and I would like to hear the information that the appellant has put together because I think it is, one, only fair, but two, also important to understand what could happen again if they just get sent back around to be able to restart their process and project. A lot of time and energy has been put in by the appellant's, their, their lawyers, and also members of the community who have come forth and taken their time out of their days to be here. And in my case, losing revenue from my job because I am self-employed, there's a lot that we try to go over with these projects and bring to your attention that sometimes is just set aside and then not given the time that it deserves. And so I, for one, and I know other people out there, would like to hear these things that are a problem and should be addressed and the concerns that the community has on these projects. So I urge you to please listen, even though they've withdrawn their project, the whole situation, sorry, remains on the next project. And I had got engaged with the, the community work because of a grow that was forced into my valley and our voices were not heard, and it, it set me off on a very angry foot. And I have since learned to kind of control my anger, but I'm very passionate about it. And I think that the board really does need to give time to the, the people that it will affect and the community at large when we bring these things to your attention. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Sir?
Good morning, Board, Chair Crandall, Vice Chair Rasmussen, my name is Tom Lasik. I'm the appellant and I'm also here as a citizen. One thing I would like to provide to make sure it's in the public record is this document. But as regard to the, this conversation about withdrawal of the application and the appeal, I'm personally would like to share with the board what our issues are and why we have worked so hard for the last eight, nine months on this issue. It's been very difficult for us and it's been quite a bit of a challenge, and we think we have a strong argument that if they do decide to come back, won't change. Now, they don't have to say a word, and Ms. Bodnar has pointed out that they're not going to participate. They don't, and they've never had to. They don't even have to show up. It's our responsibility to be here, and I want to thank all the people from our community that have showed up to try to help us. We are here because we haven't been heard. So many times, in so many areas, we point out issues and they're either glossed over or they're ignored, and it's been a very expensive endeavor for us to just to have our brief moment of time to share with you what our concerns are and why we were concerned about this project. So I'm okay if they don't want to speak, but I would like to have our appeal heard. And granted, that's how so many other appeals have gone before this board. You hear what we have to say, you make a decision, you can hear what they have to say, you can hear what the public has to say, and then you decide. And that's how they've worked countless of times in front of this board, and we're not asking for anything different. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to. All right, thank you. And that'll be submitted as well, so, yes. Go ahead.
Hi, Autumn Carcy, applicant. Unfortunately, this project has become cannon fodder for the appellant's hatred of cannabis in their community. I think this is not the right forum to argue their cases. They're trying to set a precedence of an EIR for all cannabis projects moving through the county, although they are not SEQA experts. I believe in the merits of this project, but we do want to withdraw the application. I don't think there's any sense in beating a dead horse here, and we can all move on. If we decide to continue with the appeal, obviously, I did not bring any materials with me today to fight the appeal because I figured we would just be withdrawing the application. There's over 1,200 pages of documentation here. So to the new supervisors, if you hadn't been read in on the merits of the case from both sides, I would suggest that we continue the appeal to a date and time certain so that you can catch up on all of the merits of this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Crandall, Vice Chair Rasmussen, and supervisors. My name is Margot Cambara. I'm an appellant in this appeal. I am a Lake County resident, property owner, and registered voter. I want to set the record straight. Tom Lasik and I are appealing this major use permit, and we are not anti-cannabis. We are for, for sustainable and environmentally responsible agriculture. We are on good terms with our neighbors who work in the cannabis industry. We're on good terms with our neighbors who are cannabis growers, and they happen to be good actors and good neighbors. Good neighbors help each other out, look out for each other. We have helped our cannabis-growing neighbors build a house, install septic systems, install water tanks, install water lines. We all get along. We have a friend who has a minor use permit. We have been friends for years, years, friends with him and his wife. We have helped our other cannabis neighbor tow his car. We all work for the benefit of our neighborhood and we get along. Prior to this appeal, when neighbors applied for cannabis cultivation permits, our attitude was not anti-cannabis. We reviewed the applications, we identified our concerns, we suggested solutions to our concerns. At the planning commission hearings, our concerns were addressed. The neighbor cannabis permit applicant and we reached mutual agreeable solutions. The exchange was respectful and civil to cordial. Why are we involved? Why are Tom and I involved in the permit review? Neighbors help neighbors. A neighbor to the project asked us to help review the project documents. Once we got across, got the access to the documents from the county, we had a few days till the planning commission hearing. Tom and I poured over hundreds of pages of reports, memos, agency comments, and then we drafted our public statement. We noticed several significant errors in the project application. It is remarkable that in two days, Tom and I found serious errors in the project plan that escaped the notice of the applicant and CDD who had been working on the project for years. The PC approved the permit and it looked like the project would proceed. No one expressed interest in appealing the permit. Tom and I stepped up and appealed the permit to protect our neighbors, park visitors, and Lake County's botanical jewel, Highland Springs Recreation Area. The appeal context, this appeal is bigger than the appellant's to Lake County residents. The appeal is not a case of not in my backyard. This appeal is about bad planning, bad environmental review. This appeal is about neighbor helping neighbor and neighbors working together to protect a beloved park. Lake County residents across the lake embrace this appeal. Highland Springs, Finley, Kelseyville, Lakeport, Upperlake, Nice, Lucerne, Clear Lake Oaks, the Keys, Clear Lake, Hidden Valley Lake in Middletown, community support for this appeal is strong. Lake County's, Lake County residents care enough about this appeal to show up in person three times. They take time off of work, rearrange international travel, and postpone family trips. Now, of particular note is that we are heartened by the interest of Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians in the environmental issues raised in the appeal. The Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians supports protecting their cultural resources and the land for the benefit of tribal resources and all. Moreover, the Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians offers its support to the Big Valley Tribes' position on this appeal. A representative from the Big Valley Tribes EPA office may be in attendance at this appeal hearing, and I believe Sarah Ryan is online. Among community groups appointing the appeal are Red Bud Audubon Society, Highland Springs Trails Volunteers, Lake County Horse Council, Hooves and Wheels Driving Club, and Sierra Club. This project strikes a nerve in young and, and not so young, in local residents and visitors. I have statements here from visitors who express love, admiration for Highland Springs Recreation Area and their appreciation for it, and urge us to protect that, that regional park. And so that brings us to who are the supporters of the, the appeal? They are typical Lake County residents in that they are extraordinary. Many of them have deep roots in Lake County and can trace back Lake County roots for generations. One of the county's strengths is its people. The appeal supporters have generous hearts and they work hard. They prove their love for Lake County by volunteering, volunteering many thousands of hours over the years and sometimes blood, sweat, and tears when maintaining trails in the Highland Springs Recreation Area. Their selfless volunteerism helps Lake County overcome its limited resources, improves the quality of life, and contributes to the county's economic development by increasing the attractiveness of Lake County's parks and open spaces. Some appeal supporters were invited by the county to develop Park Master Management Plan. Others served on the Mount Canuckdie Park Master Plan Committee, the Canuckdie Regional Trails Master Plan Committee, and the Lake County Tourism Advisory Committee. Several appeal supporters have served on the general plan and local area plan advisory committees in the past, and several serve on the current general plan and local area plan advisory committees. Some appeal supporters fill leadership roles in municipal advisory councils. The appeal effort impact on the appellant's. This appeal has been.
Can we get to, back to the withdrawal and/or the withdrawal?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chair.
You and your attorney had decided that you would not like to withdraw your appeal, so let's get back to that. I appreciate you saying those things. I wanted to allow you to say that because I know that there was a statement made earlier, but now we're getting further into the appeal, and I'm not sure if the board fully wants to do that yet, so.
Understood, understood. Chair Crandall, thank you. The appeal has been continued twice. We have not been allowed to present the issues, and this is important to the community. Sure, you can, you can have this, withdraw the application, but the issues will still exist, and it'll crop up maybe not in, in the applicant's next project, but it can be in another project, or it can be in something that's already in the pipeline. That's why I urge you to please hear the appeal, hear the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
All right, sorry, when, when we're done with the comments.
Are there, and you said, Johanna, that there were some folks on Zoom that would like to speak? We'll go to them. And just for a statement that I'd like to make, I allowed Mrs. Cambaro to speak a little longer because she is an appellant. Folks online, you're going to have three minutes, and we're going to have to stop at that.
And then James Anderson is.
Okay, well, yes, and he's part of, he's part of the applicant, okay.
Good morning, Board, this is James Anderson, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Crandall and honorable supervisors, this is James Anderson on behalf of the applicant Highland Farms. I just wanted to make a quick comment, and I'll keep it brief per your comment before, that the project's been withdrawn now. There is nothing for the board to hear. According to Article 58 of the County Zoning Code, the decision of the planning commission has stayed on appeal, and the board has discretion to make certain decisions based on, on the appeal. But now that the project's withdrawn, there's really nothing for the board to decide. Going through an appeal, appeal at this point would be a largely symbolic exercise, and, you know, to the extent that the appellant's want to be heard, they've had plenty of time and opportunities and in fact have made, you know, dozens and hundreds of pages of public comments on the merits of this particular appeal. Now it seems as if this appeal is turning towards a general referendum on the county's planning staff and the cannabis ordinance generally, and this is not the time or the form for that. There's other places, better places to be doing that. And to allow this appeal to continue would be prejudicial to the applicant who withdrew the application at this point would have to sit through a hearing where a project that's no longer even proposed, you know, let alone approved, is being attacked, and we wouldn't have the opportunity to respond accordingly. So with that in mind, I would urge the board strongly to allow the project to be withdrawn. I, I don't think that there's a decision to be made there. I think the project is withdrawn, and to moot the appeal and to end this hearing. If the board does decide to hear this appeal, you know, and hear public comments on it and allow the appellant's to have a presentation, we would urge the board to allow a continuance to date and time certain for us to properly respond to those. Thank you.
All right, next. All right, if you can unmute.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Monica Rosenthal from Middletown, Middletown Chair of the MAF Board. And first off, good morning to Chair Crandall and to the members of the Board of Supervisors, and welcome to the new supervisors Helen Owen and Brad Rasmussen. As I read the information, I believe what is before you today is the appeal of the Highlands Farm project, not whether or not to accept the withdrawal of the project that was presented, might I add, last minute to this board and to the, the members of the public that are participating in this, this appeal project. And I'd also like to ask why the project manner of the Highlands Farm project has been allowed to speak numerous times and allowed to read a long, lengthy letter that was poking at individuals and at groups in the community, again, when this, this item before you is the appeal of the Highlands Farm project. I totally agree with everything. I totally agree with everything Margot, Tom, Peter, Mary, and several others have stated before you today. I do agree that, that, you know, continuing this on, you know, perhaps, you know, with the withdrawal of the project pending, separate from this appeal, is, you know, time-consuming? Again, this project has consumed a lot of time, not on the fault of those that have applied for the appeal. I believe it was this Board or the Board that has, has asked to have this hearing of the appeal delayed on numerous occasions. Further, I will add that CDD has not yet read the department's recommendations, which are based on the advice of County Council, which as I recall in reading the document, indicates that there was error on the part of the PC, the Planning Commission's approval process that, that, that results in those findings made by our Planning Commission to be invalid. So I would encourage this Board to either listen to the appeal, allow this appeal hearing to go forward, or to go ahead and approve the appeal if the, if those filing the appeal agree and, and deny the project and then go ahead and accept the, the, the project dismissal with, without prejudice. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. One second, let me see if there's anyone else online. All right, if you can unmute and let's make sure it's pertaining to item 6.5.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Right, I would like to just make a more general statement about the importance of legal cannabis cultivation. Legal cannabis cultivation is a vital component of Lake County's economy and community. It provides significant employment opportunities, supports local businesses, and generates substantial tax revenue...
Ma'am, can we get back to item 6.5 and the withdrawal of the appeal?
Moreover, regulated cannabis grows...
Okay, I'm gonna have to stop that.
...ensure that product safety and environmental sustainability promote...
All right, so that's, sorry, we have to stay on task here and stay on the subject. Ma'am, can you, let's...
Thank you, sorry.
Close public input after this.
Mrs. Shorak, again, for appellants. The importance of the Board acting on the appeal today, you don't have to hear the appeal to act on it, to overturn the Planning Commission's approval and to overturn the adoption of the MND. The problem with not doing that is that MND, that negative declaration that CDD has admitted is faulty will stand and could potentially be used in the future. It's also a liability litigation risk for the county. So overall, we think that we believe and we're requesting that some action be taken today so that that approval and that adoption of the MND is overturned so that it can't be used again in the future. Thank you for your time.
All right.
Isn't that what we would be doing by overturning what the Planning Commission decided?
Yeah.
Okay.
You, you had indicated you wanted to come up. I'll give you a brief timeframe. I did close public input, but I will allow you... Okay, and then we'll let...
Hi, it's Maria Conigan. I just want to have all the facts put out on public record. I think it's important that we hear them and that they are actually in documentation, video, whatever, that, that would, they have been heard, those issues have been heard and addressed. And so that the next time this comes around, there's some, some data there. Okay? Thank you so much.
Mr. Anderson, we'll give you one last statement and then that's, we're closing it from here forward. Okay, it looks like we're good. So, we'll close public input?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Angela Amaral. I just wanted to point out that the appellants have spent a considerable amount of money and time to get to this point while the applicant's been working behind the scenes with county staff to try to find a workaround. I want to ask, maybe you can ask County Council, if the Board simply overturns the Planning Commission approval and does not grant the appeal based on the information provided from the appellant, does that essentially make the appellants' work that they've done this far, is all of their work not be ineligible for consideration should this application come back up and making, should they reapply as it is with it not being on the record? So right now, if you guys listen to the, the information that they are going to provide, it will be on the record and can be used in the future. My question is if, if you don't do it and you just overturn the Planning Commission based on the withdrawal, is all that information not going to be considered the next time? Because there is a lot of information in there that needs to be looked at. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I think from what I heard earlier is that it would because of CEQA, but I may be wrong and I'll let County Council reiterate.
So, every hearing that's presented before your Board is a, is a de novo review, is under de novo review. So, any and all relevant elements, your Board, relevant evidence presented may be considered by your Board and given its proper weight. The, the scenario of, of an application being refiled or a new application, that's all speculation at this point. So what's before your Board today is this present application that's being requested to be withdrawn. So, there are procedures in place in the zoning ordinance for your Board to take into consideration once it gets to that level. And even prior to that, there's a process of any application, any new application, to go through the review and approval process, both at the CDD side of things and also on the Planning Commission side of things. But for your Boards, for your purposes, so your Board's review, yes, any evidence that's deemed relevant by your Board, pertinent, can be given its weight under a de novo review.
All right. And so lastly, I think you said, Mr. Anderson put it, I know he was going to speak and then I allowed Angela. If you can keep it brief and make your statement, sir?
Thank you, James Anderson, again, on behalf of applicant. I just want to correct one statement made by opposing counsel, Ms. Shorak, that, you know, that this project has been approved and that the MND has been adopted and can be used in the future. That's not the case. Article 58 of the County Zoning Code stays the decision of the Planning Commission on appeal. So, this information, to the extent it can be used in the future, you know, potentially, but there is no adopted MND and there is no approved project at this time. So I just wanted to make that comment. And I do believe that by withdrawing this, again, I'll repeat myself, by withdrawing the application, it moots this appeal. And so therefore, none of the information is relevant and I'll, and on that comment, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Public input is closed. Supervisor Sabatier, then Supervisor Owen.
So I just want to share a little bit of frustration because I feel like there's arguments being made just for the sake of trying to fulfill an argument without everything. This Board has denied projects based on specific reasons when it comes to appeals. The Planning Commission has denied projects based on certain reasons, but each project is unique and different. And so, this, this jest that I'm seeing here, it doesn't work because we can't make a decision on how to treat all projects based on a hearing on a project that's based on an ordinance. And we're not changing our ordinance here today. We're talking about a specific project. And so, we have said no to projects because of concerns for water. We have said no to projects because of concerns for the surrounding area. All those things seem to be eliminated from either your knowledge or your, your, your arguments. It's very absolute. And, and so, please take a look at what has truly happened in the past. I am not going to say that what we're, what we have is perfect, but you're, you're, you're trying to make an argument for something that is not going to pass on to the next project that is being looked at because everything is unique for the parcel, everything is unique for what the project is requesting to get accomplished. It's just not that simple. And so, I feel like the analogy I have in my mind is if somebody is charged and goes up to the fourth floor and charges are dropped, you're not forced to continue to go through the court case and see what the final outcome of the court case is. There's no more project, there's no further charges, so we're done. And I just, I, I'm feeling a little level of frustration in my mind that, a W is a W. You kind of got what you wanted, but I feel like you're trying to get a little bit more. And so, I, I'm ready to move on with the motion.
Supervisor Owen?
Something that was said again, as I've stated, I'm not as experienced at this, but something that was stated a little bit ago where it could help with perhaps the, the redrawing of the cannabis rules here in Lake County. You guys had some important stuff that you might want to tell us at this moment, is what I'm kind of hearing, that could maybe sway or let us know what you're thinking for the, for the future of cannabis here in Lake County. Is that what I'm hearing? No? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yeah, and I mean, so when we're looking at an appeal, we have to look at the merits of the case and the, and the project that is in front of us. And so when we look at the, you know, the greater ordinance and the, that's what the Cannabis Task Force is about, and that's the presentation that we're going to have later today. So we, we want to be careful to keep our conversations where they belong. And so if we, if the project has been withdrawn, we don't have a project to look at. And so I do agree with my colleague. It looks like we're trying to bring in a lot bigger issues to influence, you know, the ordinance that we have, and we'll talk about that later today.
And I am ready for that motion from County Council if the Board is ready for action.
And I think that, just lastly, just with regard to what you had stated about the Cannabis Task Force, I know we were having that discussion later today. Maybe there's also another opportunity to talk about some of the things that were said today with regard to the, you know, mitigated negative declarations and whatnot. I didn't know that's Cannabis Task Force. But at a later date, I think that would be important to have that discussion because it seems like there's quite a bit of folks that want to talk about that. I know possibly they do so at Cannabis Task Force group, but at the same time, I know that there's been discrepancies and concerns about being able to discuss that. So, I'm only stating that because I'd like to possibly at a later date, outside of also the Cannabis Task Force, possibly have a discussion if it's, will of the Board at a later date. So, I just wanted to make that statement. Lloyd?
And your Board may consider a motion to overturn the Planning Commission's decision on major use permit UP 20-96 due to the withdrawal of the application and direct staff to prepare findings of fact.
So moved.
Second.
So the motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And so with that, the, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, or do we need a break?